Our session meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, February 6th of the year 2024. The time is 3:02. Ms. Cordova, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Prather?
Here.
Mr. Scott? Ms. Garza? Mayor Hewson?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Gleason? Mr. Mendoza?
Here.
We have a court present.
Okay, it's time for our citizen comment time period, but I believe I have paperwork here that says no one has signed up.
That's correct.
All right, in that case, we will roll on to item one.
Receive a step presentation regarding approval, approved FY24 CIP projects and related funding, including proposed issuance of debt, 2024 certificates of obligation issuance.
Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today's presentation will be provided by Director of Engineering CIP, Sean Condor, and includes an update on our fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program ahead of the upcoming debt issuance in April. We will also go over the related funding and timelines of projects. As a reminder, the capital improvements program guides the repair and upgrades to our aging municipal infrastructure, while also accommodating growth in conjunction with the strategic goals, master plans, and project priorities determined by city council and the community. Staff evaluates the project timeline, staff workload, and city's ability to fund a project before funding is requested. The CIP process, we understand, can be very confusing. As such, our staff have been diligently working on our approach to present this information in a way that is more clear and easier to understand. I'd like to thank Mr. Condor in particular for their time and hard work towards this effort. I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Condor to start his presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, as Ms. Reyes indicated, we're basically going to brief council and update the 2024 CIP program. This is a good opportunity to say, these are the projects we funded last year. These are the ones that are moving forward. And this is the debt that's being taken on. And this will just kind of cover all that stuff. I'll detect several slides. So, as a reminder, the capital improvements program is a multi-year planning tool used to identify and plan for major capital projects. It addresses growth, transportation, public safety, and utility infrastructure issues in conjunction with the goals and priorities as determined by city council. The adoption of the CIP and its first year of funding coincides with adoption of the budget and use a 10-year projection. So, for the purposes of this presentation, we're talking about the FY2024 CIP. So, when I say year one, I'm talking about the projects that were funded in FY2024. So, just some definitions to keep in mind as we go over the next several slides. When we say a project has been deferred, it means the project's not really ready to move yet. And a lot of that's because of typically staff capacity or timing of other issues related to the project. It's not canceled, we're just, we're not ready to sell that debt or move forward on that project. We talk about other funding, it means we've found funding other than debt. So typically, it's going to be cash funding in excess of the 25% fund balance from FY2023. We're going to use some debt reserve from previous debt on previously fully funded projects. And there's some impact fee funding that we're going to use as well. And so, again, that reduces your need to take out more debt because you're using other funding sources. And then cancel or reduce funding. These are projects that we took this last fiscal year. We really took a hard look to see if these projects should be in the CIP. So, you'll see some funding has moved over to operating budget. Some projects were completed with existing funds, so they don't need additional funding. Or some projects were just going to be put back in the CIP for our future date. Because we know it's going to be two, three years before we get to those. So, instead of deferring them every year, we're going to come back and just put it back in the CIP. So, this is kind of an overall summary of all the funds put together. And so, in 2024, the CIP approved $77 million. And then we deferred just under 16 million in projects. So, that means we got 92 million, 93 million on the books that we still need to fund. Of that 93 million, we're going to defer another 34 million. We're going to use cash or debt reserve to fund a little over 6 million. And we're going to use impact fees for a little over 10 million. And then we've canceled or reduced a little over 11 million. So, what that means, out of all that 92 million, we're going to go out and take debt on just under 31 million. And then to the right, I got a breakdown of that 31 million or so with 8.65 in general, 8.6 in storm, with a little reminder that for this debt sale, the general fund will be supporting the stormwater projects. So, there will be no debt taken out on stormwater. And electric is 6 million, and the water wastewater is 7.7 million, for a grand total of 30 million, just under 31 million. Going to take a different approach here to try and link the CIP to the budget. And what I want to do here is kind of walk through an analogy of buying a home. I think that's an easy way to grasp the concept. You bought a home, great, this, you'll follow. If you haven't, you might learn something here about what the process is. So, when you talk about the CIP, we always approve with the budget in 2020, in September. And so, for the 24 CIP, it was approved in September. With that September approval by council, the FY24 CIP, it was like 77 million. Think of that as your home, your home loan. So, when you go out and you buy a house, you put out your finances, you look at your rate models, what can I afford, what do I need to do? You think it's about 77 million. So, that's what we got permission from council to approve. Come January, the finance team has closed the books on the previous fiscal year. So, when they do that, they're coming back saying, hey, we have some cash we can apply towards this loan. Because when you apply for a loan, you think you have cash, but you're not quite sure. Well, now, when we close the books on the previous fiscal year, we know what cash we have. So, John's able to come back and say, hey, we got 16.5 million we can put towards this process to reduce how much debt you have got to take out. So, then comes February. So, I know I got 16.5 million that I don't need to take out in debt because I'm using other sources. What projects are ready to move forward? And so, that's when internally, we meet with staff, say, which projects are ready to go? Which do we need to sit on, which can we cancel? And that's where we come back and say, okay, so I've got 46 million, with the 77 reduced down to 46 million. And you take out the 16 million, it says, that's 30, just under 31 million that I've got to take debt on. And that's like the equivalent of signing a contract on your home. So, you know, when you take out, you say you buy a $100,000 home, you take out the down payment, and at the end of the day, your debt is mixed off for all the, at the bottom line. So, that's where we're at, is we know we need to take out a loan of about 31 million. So, we're going to get your permission, and John's going to take over. If you ever bought a house, you know, when you sign a contract, you don't move in the next day. It's a month or two before you close and go through all that stuff. So, the big mystery here is going to be, what interest rate are we going to get? So, that's what they'll go through in the next few months. And in April, we should know that interest rate. We're anticipating it in the 4% to 6% range, probably closer to 4% is what we're seeing lately. What that equates to is about a $2.5 million mortgage payment or debt payment, if you will, on the books for us. But just like your house, you close on a house, you don't pay that loan the next day. You typically pay several months down the road. Same thing here, we're going to close on that debt sale in April, but our first payment's not due till FY2025. And the way we do it on the local side is typically in February and August is when the finance will make those payments. So, all that is basically saying, when we approve the 24 CIP, you really feel it in the 25 debt and the budget, not necessarily the 24 budget. We've got to look ahead and use a rate model to figure all that out. So, long story short, that's how it links together. All right, so let's now go into each fund. And we're going to start with the general fund. In 2024, we had about 14.6 million approved. We deferred a little over 7 million. And then we're going to transfer that stormwater debt of 8.6 million. So, we got about 30.3-ish million we need to fund. Based off the input from its staff, we're going to defer 6.2 million. We're going to use 1.36 in cash debt reserve, no impact fee on general fund. And then we've canceled or reduced about 5.4 million for a total of 17.25 million. So, I'm going to go over each project here, just to kind of orient you here. It's got the project number, the name. The prior year deferred means any funding that was approved other than FY2024, than what was approved in the 24 CIP. And that middle column's the one you want to focus on. That's where your debt's going. It's that bold, it's supposed to be bold, but it's not really turning up bold here. That's what adds up to the debt amount. And then to the right of that is other funding sources, such as cash, impact fees. The deferred projects are not ready to move forward. And the far right, we need projects that were canceled or reduced in funding. So, I'm going to go through, I'm going to kind of give highlights of some, and I'll skip over a few that are just pretty straightforward. But the big one, we'll start with Airport DOL, that's a big one. That was a 4.5 million deferred. What's going on there is we're working with the DOL to purchase land around the airport. They've been promising us an appraisal for, I don't know, going on a year, nearly two now.
DOL?
Department of Labor.
Thank you.
And so, we were supposed to get it back last summer. Last course of months, we had, in December, says we'll get it this month. But at the end of the day, we know we don't need 4.5. We just don't know what we need. And so, we decided we're going to defer it until we get the amount. When we know what we need, then we'll just fund what we need, we'll just cancel the rest. So, you'll see that in next year's debt sale list, as far as what, how we proceed. The airport runway extension, airport control tower infrastructure grants, those are all being funded with cash. The Bishop Street improvements is moving forward with 1.5 million towards debt. The Dunbar education stabilization, we're going to defer the 250,000. We found some grant funding that we're going to use for now that hopefully will cover that need. And if we need that later, we can come back and get it. But for now, we think we got it covered. And so, we're going to defer it until we know for sure that grant covers the full needs of that building. East Dock Arena Springs, we're going to be funding 850 through debt, 850,000. The emergency signal, emergency signal, traffic repair upgrades, and fiber optic infrastructure expansion are moving forward as well with cash. The fire department replacement truck, we're going to fund 2.3 million for that. The fire station remodel, we're estimating 3 million now for debt. The Highway 123 improvements project, that was a water line along 123. TechStop's actually building a sidewalk right now. We thought we had to move that water line ahead of their sidewalk, but they're actually going to put the sidewalk on the, it's called the north side of 123, which is not in conflict with the water line. So, we're going to hold up on that water line project. And we actually had a lot of conversation with Tech, brought out some safety improvements to 123. So, we want to see where that conversation goes with TechStop as well before we begin to start doing any improvements to our water line through there. The IH35 shared used connection path, used, that's for the design money for that grant that was just approved. That was going to be cash funded. Parks Master Plan is 150, is cash funded. The Pat Garrison improvements from Comanche to Guadalupe, that money was put in there for the right-of-way. We got that addressed with some reserve funds last year. So, we're going to defer that for now. The design should be kicking off in the next year or two. So, we don't want to cancel it yet because it's still kind of that quasi-window. So, we're going to keep a closer eye on that. And I will note with that one, you're going to see some of these projects repeated multiple times because it's by fund. And so, you'll see Pat Garrison listed three or four times to this presentation. PD Shooting Range Bullet Trap, we're going to fund that with 800,000 debt. The River ADA improvements project, we're waiting on the riverfront's master plan to get some direction, and then we'll move forward with that project. The Susten Drive Resurfacing is 500 in cash. Next up is the animal shelter improvements. We're going to cancel that. I think it was fully funded with what we had. Strategic land acquisition, we will kind of slow down on that project and make sure, we might put that back in the future. We want to talk about that to make sure, that's really basically to purchase some strategic land throughout the city, but we're not really ready to move forward with that at this time. Sunset Acres Phase One, that's the wastewater project. We've, we're going to move forward with that. The traffic signal synchronization improvements and transportation oversize will be funded with cash. The UP RR Quiet Zone at Uland. So, we got a million that was deferred. And the story there is we got about 1.3 or 1.4 ARPA money. We still don't know what it's going to cost. And so, we're waiting on UP to give us a final cost to confirm that will cover. And then if we need this 1 million, we just use that to cover what they don't. If we don't, we'll just cancel in the future.
Could you go back to the Sunset Acres wastewater line, please? And tell us a little bit more about that one? Because we did the temporary one, then we've got the long term, but then we were also waiting on the TechStop project, or maybe that was...
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Sunset Acres, we've broken it up into four phases.
Okay.
And so, let me make sure I got Phase One, too. So, Phase One should be the wastewater line, which is currently under construction. That was the one that has some sewage backup in the neighborhood that we expedited to get those folks addressed.
Is that the temporary one?
Well, it's a permanent wastewater line.
Okay, thank you.
But it will have some temporary construction that will get removed in the future when we actually do the full project.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's sacrificial concrete is what I like to call it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Excuse me?
Is that the one in Broadway?
Yes, sir.
Microphone.
Yeah, it's going to go down Broadway and then it'll go turn up Parkdale. And so, we're just putting the wastewater for now. There'll be some, like I said, some sacrificial concrete and asphalt. Phase Two is the detention pond. We are working on Mendez Elementary to kind of work on the land. They had a, I think they presented it to their board within the last few months, and they've got kind of a rough idea where they want to go. So, we're having some internal conversations on how we can maybe combine their detention pond requirements for their project with ours and maybe make a solution that works for both parties and preserve the land. So, they're really driving the schedule on that one. So, hopefully, they will get us back the next few months on where we can go. But really, they're in the driver's seat in the schedule, but they are on board to participate and help. And we've had some good conversations.
Good, thank you.
The Phase Three is going to be the downstream section. It's basically the trunk line, if you will, from TechStop, kind of over the Olive Garden driveway is, up through the trunk, through the neighborhood. It'll go up Patricia, and then down Broadway, and then up Parkdale. And that's basically to connect to the detention pond site near Mendez Elementary. And then the Phase Four will be basically everything in between that that trunk line doesn't touch. And so, those...
I'm sorry, sir. We talked about some backflows on Broadway. Was that going to be part of this project or not?
Sure, the utilities department said no. Because the utilities department had worked out something, they found a low-cost effective solution to put some backflow prevention so that if the sewage does occur, it would allow it to pop up, if you will. That said, with the 12-inch going in, we anticipate those problems going away.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that cover Sunset Acres today?
That's good, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so I think I skipped... I did want to touch on the household hazardous waste facility. We had 5 million. We did some internal conversations on that particular subject. We're not quite sure that's ready to move forward yet. It's kind of tied to the City Hall. We found a temporary home for those folks there across the HUB and the old Public Works Facility. And so, we're going to go back and look at that one. You could see that come back in the CIP in the future, but for now, we're just not quite ready to move on that one.
And which one was that one?
The household house.
Oh, the hazardous waste.
There you go, HHW.
Thank you.
I love that. So, all right, stormwater utility fee. So, we had a little under 8 million approved in the CIP. We deferred 1.3, so we need about 9 million. Of that 9 million, we're going to defer another 250. The general fund's going to cover the 8.6, and we're going to cancel about 200,000. So, again, stormwater debt issuance is going to be $0. The projects being funded are really, the big one is the Bishop Street improvements. We're going to do the debt sale of about 6.5 million. The Castle Force drainage is 1.3 million. The Cemetery Franklin Stormwater improvements, we had about 100,000. We're going to relook at that area with the stormwater master plan and see if there's a more regional solution that'll work. We're just doing something right up that area. East Dock Arena, that's going to move forward with the debt sale. The 123, again, we talked about that one. Pat Garrison, we talked about shady gravel utility improvements. We're going to fund that with debt at 350, and Sunset Acres, another 300. Next up is electric utility, just under 8 million with 360 previously deferred, so about 8.3 million total. We're going to defer 1.7 of that amount and then do cash debt for the 40,000, reserve for the 40,000. Cancel just over 500,000 for a debt issuance of 6 million. Of those projects, we got the Chetum Waterline, Guadalupe to CMLN. We had some underground electric work tied to that. Again, we want to slow down. I think we have some greater needs in the water side. So, that's one project we can hold off on doing, so we're going to cancel that. We'll put it back in the CIP in the future. The Hilltop T1 Transformer Replacement, we're going to defer that till we have a better idea when we're ready to move forward on that project. The main lift station replacement, we're going to cancel that and put it back in the CIP just because we know the wastewater master plan's coming through. We've got a lot of big stuff going on on the wastewater side. So, we want to make sure we got that scope right before we move forward with it. The Redwood 320 Reconductor, we're going to fund that at 1.2 or 1.5 million. Shady Gravel Valley has 400,000 cash we're going to use. We talked about the strategic land acquisition. Sunset Acres subdivision, they're going to do the underground conversion. They're going to use debt cell 3.5. And I did, I forgot to talk about that one. But what's going on there in that entire subdivision, the poles need to be replaced. Because of the shortage of the general and the stormwater to get those projects moving forward, electric doesn't have the time to wait. So, they want to move forward and get those, get that done before those poles deteriorate where they can't be repaired. Or actually, they're not repairing, they're going underground. So, that's what's driving their, their schedule, is the condition of the current poles. Underground electric conversion, they converted that to the operating budget. And then the Zone Two pole replacement, they're not quite ready to move forward with that. So, they're going to defer that in another year. Next up, we got the water wastewater utility. We got about 46, 47 million in the 24 CIP there. We deferred a little over 7 million for a total of 53.8 million. Of that amount, we're going to defer 25.8 million. We're going to use cash debt reserve for just under 5 million. Impact fees a little over 10 million. And we're going to cancel about 5 million. So, anticipated debt issuance is just about 7.72 million. When you look at just the water projects, we got the airport FM110 at 50,000. The Bishop Street improvements, that's the big project being funded this year. That's at 1.5 million. The Castle Force is 120,000. The Chetum Waterline, we talked about that project being canceled. The Dunbar, we're going to move forward with that one. It should be going out on the street here pretty quick. We're going to fund that with, I believe that was cash. Hunter Water Main Extension, we're going to fund that at 200,000. And then the 123, we talked about it. Next up is the Lazy Lane. Again, just looking at the condition of our water utility rates and knowing we got big stuff coming, that's a project we're going to just cancel and put back in the CIP at a later date when we have a better ability to fund it. Linda Drive improvements, we're moving forward at 500,000 debt. The Pat Garrison, we talked about, shitty gravel, we talked... Water improvements, we're going to defer that. We have enough money in that account now to address the immediate needs, and so, we might fund it in the future. The water pump stations, water improvements, they've canceled those and they rolled those into the operating budget. The Center Point Road...
So, they didn't cancel the project, it's just removed from the CIP?
The bottom two, yeah, they're recurring costs annually. So, let's put it in operating budget where it belongs.
Okay, I thought, I thought I heard you say cancel that and then operating budget, and I got confused.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
The Center Point, we got a lot going on at Center Point there. So, that is going to be funded with cash for the construction of that line. The B-backs, the Center Point section from B-back to the south, we're going to cancel that and put that back in the CIP when the... There's two other projects that need to be done before that one can be done. So, that one's not quite ready to move forward. Highway 80 Utility is a big one. There's 10 million here, and there's another 15 on the wastewater side. That's going to, impact fee eligible project, we're out of impact fees. Plus, we have a good chance of getting Water Development Board money. So, we're slowing down. We're going to go after that Water Development Board money again and get that impact fee fund time to build back up so we can use impact fees to fund it. So, we're going to defer that, hopefully fund it next year or the year after. Reclaimed water system expansions, 300,000, that's funded with cash. And then the trunk kill tank, that project's not quite ready to move forward. There's a lot of other things that have to happen before that. So, we're going to cancel it, put that back in the CIP when we have a better idea when it's ready to move forward. That's one of those developer-driven projects that you're just, a lot of times, you're guessing when they'll be there, and we guessed wrong there. The Bishop Street improvements is 1.5 million. Now, we're in wastewater, so it was water, now we're wastewater. Bishop Street improvements, 1.5 million debt, Castle Force 120,000. Davis Lane, it's a 2.5 million. That's kind of a stopgap measure, if you will, to address the sewer overflows we're having along River Road in that area. The Dunbar Utility Phase One, that's just under a million, getting funded with cash. Fiber optics expansions, 80,000 debt, Linda Lane, 500,000. Main Lift Station, we talked about that. We're going to cancel, put that back in the future. And then Melview West Wastewater is 150. All right, talked about pretty much all of it. So, wastewater collection at the 150 there, that's one that we canceled in the CIP. We put it in the operating budget, it'll live in the operating budget from now on. Wastewater improvements, again, we have enough money there. Those are some designs that could come up, some things that we don't know that we need to occur, some design engineering design. And so, we got enough to cover that for now, so we're referring it. Wastewater Lift Station improvements, that's maintenance stuff that they put in the operating budget. Wastewater oversizeding, we're going to fund that at 500,000. And then the Highway 80 Utility, again, we deferred that to waiting on that Water Development Board project. And then some wastewater treatment, wastewater treatment plant improvements. We're going to fund that at 10 million with impact fees. So, next steps, we're giving your presentation today regarding the projects to be funded. Next council meeting, John and his team will present a resolution directing the publication of the notice of intent to issue a certificate of obligation. The week of February 26th, the first notice of intent appears in newspapers. Week of March 4th, the second notice appears. The week of March 18th, the rate agency call. And then April, you'll have the ratings received and published by SPFI, which is, I don't know what that is.
Specialized Public Finance.
Specialized Public Finance Index? What's the I? Incorporate, there you go.
Mr. Wegmiller and others, correct?
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm handing it off.
Yeah.
So, April 16th, they will come back. City council will consider ordinance authorized in issuance of certificate obligation. That's when we'll know what that interest rate is. And then May 8th, we'll get the delivery of funds. So, what's good about this is it tells you, you know, when we go through the CIP process, we present it to P and Z and council in the springtime, if you will. We approve it September, but we don't get the money till May. So, there's a long gap there, and a lot of things can happen between those dates. So, which is why you get a lot of projects deferred or canceled or vice versa. But with that, I'll open up to questions.
Turn on your microphone. Yes, Mr. Gonzalez.
One question, on the Linda Lane project.
Okay.
Were you using any DR funding for that?
No, sir.
We were at first, weren't we?
No, the Linda Lane is a, it's a wastewater line that we're coming down Linda Lane to connect to that Davis Lane Lift Station, basically where the two are connecting.
All the DR is related to flood.
Yeah, there's no drainage.
Extremely bad as well, I just don't remember if it was part of that funding or not.
There is no drainage improvements with that project. And we did do a design, and we have some design infrastructure planned. So, when we put in those utilities, it will be designed for a future drainage project. We just don't have the funding, and there's not enough money in the drainage fund to do the drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any projects that would be less than 20-year? Are there any projects that would be less than 20-year? I know we've been talking about construction, and that's 20. Is there anything in the general fund that's going to be a less than 20-year?
Um, I'm not quite following the question.
Well, for example, a number of years ago, replacing the carpet at the Activity Center was...
The term. She's, she's asking about the term of the bond. So, are we doing any shorter-term bonds rather than 20-year?
Yeah.
I'm going to, 20-years is kind of the standard for the industry. I don't know if John wants to add anything, but none of the projects...
For construction, I get that. But years ago, we had replacing carpet at the Activity Center. And Councilmember Gregson at the time said, that's not going to last 20 years. Why are we doing 20 years for things that won't last 20 years? And I believe that y'all went back and did that as a five or 10. And we, we've done some like that in the past. I don't, I don't see anything in the big grid to tell us, yeah, it wouldn't be in this one, but in the big grid to tell us, do we have anything that would qualify for less than 20 years with this next upcoming sale?
I, I don't see...
There may not be. It, it may be that we're not putting things in there that aren't 20-year eligible, which would kind of be okay. But this one's, the, the big sheet is too small for me to see, so...